Good evening and welcome. We have our city hall meeting here. It's 5:30 November 17th of 2025 at the council chambers in the greatest city in the world. Evolith, I bring this meeting to order. Roll call please.
Council Rowsey.
Yeah.
Council Koyvenen.
Here.
Council Purpich.
Here.
Council Willis.
Here.
Mayor Rome.
Here. Thank you. First up, we'll have the approval of minutes. We have minutes of the city council workshop from November 3rd of 25 and the minutes of the city council meeting November 3rd of 25. Both obviously on that same date, do you have a motion to move?
To move.
Support.
There's excitement in the air. Everybody's supporting me.
She just.
So I'm going to say I heard Koyvenen on one side of me and I heard Rowsey on the other side of me. Any discussion on that? Motion to move is set. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Keep the excitement coming, gentlemen. All right, next up is the approval for the agenda. Motion to move.
So move.
Purpich.
Support.
Willis. Anybody have any additions, tractions? Otherwise, I can do them. All right, we have subtractions of number one and number two. Those are both being removed for the time being and will be added in the very near future. We will add, we're just going to start off and leave number three as three. So we'll be adding 11, 12, 13, and 14. Number 11, proclamation for the Rockbridge tennis team as November 7th. The 12th number will be conversation about the Rams dinner. Number 13 will be about the possible purchase of a backup Zamboni. And the 14th one will be the possible rap and sponsorship of Zamboni. Possibly plural, depending on the routine. Anything else for changes? All right, all in favor with the changes as listed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we will carry on with the agenda. Next up, we have public comment. Anybody that'd like to take their few minutes at the stand, feel free to do so. She says no, not doing it. Fair enough. With that being said, we will move on to consent of the agenda. First up and only thing on is approval of the payroll for October 16th through the 31st of 2025. Motion to move.
So move.
Koyvenen.
Support.
Support by Rowsey. Any discussion? All in favor of paying our people, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I dare you. All right, that'll bring us to new business. New business number three. Resolution making levy and assessment against taxable properties for special assessments and delinquent water, sewer refuse collection accounts, and miscellaneous unpaid obligations. Motion to move.
So move.
Support.
Purpich and Rowsey. Discussion?
I suspect I am going to have to abstain since I'm responsible for some of the delinquents.
I've gone through this and there's a couple of things I want to say. One thing is, this when I first started was $80,000. Now it's considerably a lot less. And as I looked on here, I see a few of the people that have passed away. The only one that I have a question on was the OSI one. Is it just an overlook for $37? Somebody contacted them? I guess I don't understand it.
I'm sure that the utility board, Mackenzie's contacted them. We know they were purchased by middle business. So it's probably oversight down there. You know, Stephanie certifies these by the end of November. We still take payments, so I'll make sure she follows them.
Yeah, I mean, that just doesn't seem right, but all the other ones seem like, yeah, it's not right, so. That's all I got.
Any further discussion? With one upstanding, all in favor of moving forward with the first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four ayes, one upstanding being Willis. Thank you. Next up, number four, retainer agreement between the city of Evolith and Colosmo, Patchan, and Kearney, help the attorneys at law. Motion to move.
So move.
Support. Koyvenen and Purpich. Any discussion, any questions regarding what we see? So the only thing that I really noticed is, you don't want to join us all the time anymore? Just be blunt, just say it.
Mayor, although it is an honor to be at the city council meetings for the best city in America, maybe the world. That is correct. So there's a lower, there's a lower routine actually as a result of that. Still with availability based on our ability to send the attorney over when need arises, but it does not include regular attendance at the meetings. Still reviewing the agendas, reviewing the questions, reviewing all of the things in the packet. Much the same, just not attendance at the meetings.
I do forget, was there a timeline on when, how much time you need in advance for somebody from your team to join us?
We'll go with a lawyer's response and we'll call it a reasonable advanced notice.
Fifteen minutes.
Reasonable advance.
So if we have a meeting at seven and we decide that we need Joel here a quarter after, we can't call you?
You have my cell phone.
Perfect. We'll put that on the website.
Could we go back and review the agenda? Move item number four.
Oh, perfect. No, I appreciate it. We always appreciate you being here, but I think it makes sense as well as when we need you, we need you, and when we're just flying through things, it makes sense that you're able to do something else with your time. Any further discussion on that at all, that retainer? Motion to, excuse me. No further discussion, all in favor of this retainer agreement between the city of Evolith and our attorneys at law, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Next up is number five, request from Anime Tom's Act to purchase undeveloped alley right away. Motion to move.
So move.
By Rowsey, any support?
Also. Support for discussion. Yeah.
Koyvenen. Support. Open for discussion.
Well, the point I have here is I was, I asked Jerry, this is where he moves behind Kinsey's house and where it stops the alley. So if I'm not mistaken, this just keeps going farther, is that what she's? I guess I.
If you have the north side of her house, you have that alley easement there that was never developed.
In past, have we sold stuff like this? I mean, I.
We vacated. I mean, not recently, but you vacate, you can vacate undeveloped roads and alleys and Joel can make a comment about what vacations are.
Yeah, so we call them paper roads or papered alleys. So it shows on the plaque, it's not actually developed as an alley. And when vacated, it's offered to the adjoining property owners to purchase. They can work that out amongst themselves. And there's a whole process that we need to go through if that's something that he wants to vacate. It would need to be vacated before it was sold.
Well, the problem I have is I know that the people down there, her neighbor and they're not getting along, so how would that work? I mean, would he have to give the okay to vacate? I don't, I don't understand. I don't want to create.
Wouldn't it have to be all the people that are around that alley? Not just those two people, but people on the other side of the alley? Wouldn't there have to be a petition or something going around saying, the city has just received
a thing that this alley be vacated and we need your opinion, yes or no? Wouldn't that have to be something done, Joel, something like that?
Correct, Council. There'd be a hearing and all of the adjoining owners and individuals. It's interesting if you had an opportunity to be hurried to respond and potentially acquire part of the vacated portion of a body of property.
Is there planning and zoning involved in this? I mean, where my head is at? Shouldn't he be here?
I spoke with Tony about it. So a vacation isn't so, I said, is it in the zoning code? And I'm not sure who's listening very well, it's in my car. But yes, he wants to participate and take care of the story. If he so chooses, to at least consider this pursuant to the Minnesota statute and all the rules surrounding the process of a vacation.
Correct. My second question would go to Jerry. Do we have any infrastructure that runs through that alley that could be considered, you know, further on? There's no.
There's nothing on either side of that. In the north side.
There's no shut offs or anything like that or anything that could be in the way?
Yeah, there's nothing for the equivalent from us.
Are there any other two labors besides these two Kinsey?
I think there's three or four houses on that.
That are affected on that, on that alley.
She's the last post that I know of.
But they have access to them.
Well, it's undeveloped, so really.
Is that, that's right off of where we have, where trailers can park and stuff too, isn't it?
Yeah, it comes around that side. It hooks up with the alley right behind Kinsey.
And that's leased land that we have the trailers and stuff on. And this is city-owned land and she wants to.
It was designed to be an alley some day.
That would have kept going all the way down.
It would have went past her house to the left and went towards the Leavins Street, hooked up with that alley, maybe an analysis.
And who owns that property next to it? If you kept going with that alley.
Are you talking on the north side?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably mine. That may be mine.
Okay. So it just kind of stops.
Well, it goes to the west and then it goes to the south. It's just a little chunk.
So you can, you can say, should go ahead and go through the process and at the end of the process, Rachel, it's still your choice. Right, Joel? What are you thinking?
Oh, it all depends on what kind of feedback we get.
Well, I think we could open up the process to see what, you know, to see if everybody's okay with it or if they're not. That's why I think it's a better, we're planning zoning on board.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do an analysis and come back with our. I'm sure that there'll be someone that needs to say something about it.
I'm sure.
Well, you gotta, you gotta put it open. Well within the individual's rights and for sure encourage that participation.
All right, so for clarification, we are then authorizing the opportunity to move forward on this, but we're not authorizing that this is said and done. We will vote on this one more time.
Correct. My recommendation would be to direct city staff to communicate to her to proceed with a standard vacation proceeding request to the city and then move from there. If she's not willing to do that, then you don't want zoning and planning involved in doing that unless she's serious about moving forward.
Okay, so that means in essence, we are actually advising city staff to direct and get her the proper papers to do the application process for this zoning. So is there anything that needs to be truly voted on then in that? Or just directing?
No, I don't think you should take action on the request to buy this to have her proceed with the request for a petition to vacate if she so chooses.
Okay, so with that being said, there's nothing there to vote on. I'm pretty sure Jackie wrote something down in the process of all this.
She did.
She wrote something down. So with that being said, we will negate any vote thereafter. Thank you for the discussion and Ms. Tomzak, keep your eyes open for some directive from the city on how to proceed in direction of what you're looking for. That'll bring us to number six. Considering the purchase of a wheel loader. We can just move on to number seven or no? No, okay. Motion to move on this consideration of purchase of a wheel loader.
So move.
Koyvenen.
Support.
Purpich.
With discussion.
Discussion is open.
Well, the reason I supported this is because we, we're going to need one. And the way Jerry presented it to us, which is a good deal, it's 2024 and we will be, we needed one for next year anyway, but we're saving almost $50,000, $44,000 and change getting this one. And I just think it's the best bang for our buck. We get the same warranty, we get same everything, we're just getting it a little earlier. So that's the reason I'm for it and it's saving a city money. And we'd be getting a new one next year anyway, so. Did you say Jerry and saving money in the same sentence? You know, I am. I looked at it and when he told me about it and I knew we were saving $42,000 or $43,000, I just put my thinking cap on, said we're going to have to buy the thing next year and the cost would probably go up another $75,000. So we are saving in the long run and that's why I'm behind this at the $200,000 mark.
As I was looking through this, I feel for Jerry's parents who probably were told, if you buy me this Tetris right now for my birthday, it'll be way cheaper than that Christmas time and we get the same warranty and the same games. Jerry, we appreciate what you do. As much flack as you take from this group.
You'd be a good used car salesman.
Yeah, $44,000 though is a nice savings for essentially a brand new piece of equipment with all the perks that we hope to get with a new piece of equipment. So is there any further discussion regarding this? Does anybody want Jerry to talk up his big priced item, any? Or we've heard enough regarding?
You know, we, we had a lot of talk at that meeting and he answered all the questions that we wanted and it's just, it's a good deal.
What do you think you'll get for your old one? Just if you, if we don't get it, we'll take it from your paycheck, but I mean, what number?
I'd like to see $20,000.
Okay.
You know, we're not sure. I mean, when you go to an auction, could be more, could be a little less.
Could be less, sure. I have $20,000 as kind of the standard.
We'll have a little bid on it. We'll have a starting bid on it.
Okay.
We have.
Okay, and that would be in the spring?
That'd be in the, next summer, we'll bring you a list of items that we have in surplus that we can auction off.
Because we're not going to get this right away.
We'll get the loader right away.
Oh, good.
Quick as they can go pick it up and drive it up there.
Where is it?
It's in Wisconsin right now.
How fast does a loader go?
On the back of the, that might be the fastest.
Just kidding.
Wonderful. Any further discussion regarding the wheel loader? All right, all in favor of moving forward with this purchase of the wheel loader and the funds that were put aside by Jackie for the purchase? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Purchase of a wheel loader. Just like the Tetris, he's never told no. All right. Next up is number seven, resolution accepting grant navigator funding. Motion to move on this resolution.
So move.
Rowsey.
Support.
Willis. Discussion is open. So the way I understand it is we're accepting the opportunity to move forward with different services, so to speak?
We're accepting this grant from the legal Minnesota cities that we're going to give to NSA professional services, Tom, aye, to go find other financing sources or that way it's one of our.
Money to find money.
Right.
I read a professional quote, search for grants.
So, but this is only for Tom to do this?
Yes.
We're not, we're not working with multiple entities?
It was designed for NSA.
Okay, okay.
I have a question about our authorizing agent. That's a lot of authorizing you're signing up for, my friend.
Getting this money.
Okay, get it as much as you can.
Is there any further discussion on that resolution? All in favor of moving forward, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion will carry. Number eight. Pay application number five from Peterson Sheet Metal Inc. in the amount of $16,806.2 for multi-purpose building boiler reconstruction project. Motion to move.
So move.
Is there support? So is this the end of the boiler project then completely? Or are we going to see some other?
Well, there's still some work to be done and a couple of punchless items that they're still working on.
So is the room, or excuse me, is the building being properly heated right now?
Yeah, I asked Jerry that this morning. He says he believes so, that it's on.
Yeah, I think it's up and running. They just have some other.
Punchless.
There's some valves up there, I think, that aren't working correctly. So we got to figure out what we want to do with those. We're looking into it a lot.
But the things that they're working on, are these all things that are kind of configured into the overall asking price or are these all the extra percent?
Some of that would be extra. You know, the valves, if they have to install some valves, that would definitely be extra. They're just learning that process now since they're getting it up and running.
Was there a timeline when they truly felt like every aspect of this heating process would be done?
Well, so I really thought it would be done late this summer, except as you all know, supply chain timing is not any better than it used to be when coal was turned. It's, you know, sometimes these fabrications are just in time, make it when the order
Doesn't make you feel better answer, not a.
No, it doesn't.
All right. There's no further discussion regarding that. All in favor of paying the bill of $16,806.2 for Peterson Sheet Metal for that boiler, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion will carry. Next up, we have a letter from the Rockbridge High School, Deca regarding National Deca Month. In essence, there is high hopes that we can create a, the month of November to be Rockbridge's Deca celebrating, helping Rockbridge Deca celebrate National Deca Month, which is a time dedicated to recognizing and honoring the achievements and impact of Deca as on students. Deca is an international organization that prepares emerging leaders in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. So in essence, what we are hoping for, and I apologize to chapter president Ms. Sather for not reading the entire thing, is it's well put together, it is available, people would like to read it. However, what we are looking for is a motion to move, support, and announce November as National Deca Month.
So move.
Rowsey. Koyvenen. Discussion is open.
I know Deca month now.
Ms. Sather, if you'd like to step up and say anything, I will open that floor for
Hi, I'm Abby Sather. I'd like to tell you guys a little bit more about what Deca means for our school and in our community. So Deca is a competitive event with, it's a competitive student event with nearly 300,000 students worldwide. It's not just in our state or in our nation. Students are tested on their expertise in marketing career areas and their poised professionalism and ability to handle difficult marketing and HR situations. Competitors develop marketing proposals, advertising campaigns, and business plans along with competitions. We host events that our chapter participates in throughout the school, such as events at our elementary school, writing cards for local nursing homes, or making tied blankets to donate for the holiday season. Deca is a great opportunity for students to learn about real life business scenarios and help them prepare for life, even if they don't go down the business chapter, it still teaches them vital professional skills. The past two years, we've been able to send students to the International Career Development Conference and we have the goal of making that a third year. This school year, we had planned on sending eight students to ICDC this coming April in Atlanta, Georgia. This proclamation is one step closer to reaching the school. And I want to thank you all for making your time and for making Deca something this month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think it should be noted that advisor, Mr. Kyle Hammer from our town here is their supervisor and he received a stipend from the radio, our television station, WDIO, last year, an amount of Teacher of the Year or Teacher of the Month or something like that. He got it and he donated all that money back to the chapter and I thank him for getting these new people interested in business and finance and marketing. It's a great thing and I hope you do well.
So for clarification, Ms. Sather, are we, do you need a day, specific day, or would you like the month?
I mean, the proclamation was broken today, November 17th, 2025, but month works, whatever you'd like to sign.
November 17th was the day you're looking for, would like it? Any further discussion on proclaiming November 17th National Citywide Decade Day here at the greatest city? If no further discussion, I will then announce that today be November 17th National Decade Day. Thank you so much for coming, we appreciate it. There's a picture with a beautiful young lady and five guys standing next to her that will be out there in the future, so thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion will carry. Thank you. Next up, number 10. Consider the city of Evolith being the fiscal agent for funding for airports, no removal equipment. Motion to move.
So move.
Support.
Wow, Purpich and Koyvenen.
It's kind of in our ballpark.
Yeah, absolutely. Jackie, do you want to fill us in on, on the true points to why we might want to look into this?
So the city of Evolith and the city of Virginia own the Evolith Virginia Airport. We have an authority board and they have gotten a grant to get some removal equipment. It's just that the airport authority does not have any authority, sorry, to take on any debt, take out a loan that was done on purpose. And some years ago, five years ago, the city of Evolith, while we were serving as the airport fiscal agent, intervened in a project to get like a $2 million bond so we could do a big airport reconstruction project. So Virginia is the fiscal agent, had been all year, okay? And I think you guys saw some communication from them, they're unable to take on this additional debt because their age array sold millions of dollars of the bonds, so they're all with their limited. So they're asking if the city of Evolith can step in, or it won't be over our limit, step in to be the fiscal agent. So I worked at the bond council, do all the paperwork. The city of Virginia would be required to sign the project unit because this is a general obligation grant anticipation warrant. So what happened is that we get the money, we put it into a projects account, they pay for this removal that went in, then we wait for the grant to get reimbursed to the airport authority, they give the money back to the bank, get the bank back.
Doesn't happen overnight either?
Uh, no.
No.
It doesn't happen overnight.
So the fiscal agent portion of it, is it something that was just voted on and changed to Virginia at some point? Is this something that happens every so many years?
Well, so since the airport board reconstituted in, lost track of time, Joe, four years ago, maybe?
Four years, three to four years ago.
Since because of honestly, the city of Evolith was kind of behind reconstitution of it. And so we said we would step up to get a fiscal agent. And with that came where the airport coordinator would work with the city of Evolith, our staff because of our long history of working in government. And then that coordinator worked, the airport manager worked, which worked just fine. And after I gave my retirement notice last December, I said, it was probably time to let Virginia be the fiscal agent since I would be exiting and some of you would be coming here.
Okay. So in.
They can't.
Well, the equipment will be delivered until late December and by the time they verify that they've gotten the equipment and all the parts and they sign off on delivery and the architect puts together the pay request, much like Alan does from Boltman, Minkerwood set does on our projects, it'll be January until, before the bill can get paid. So whether Virginia should have the capacity in January, I would think so, it's a calendar thing we are planning.
So in our vote, we're just stating that we're considering it? We're not saying that we will be paying it? Or are we stating that if, if it comes to the city that we are, this vote is stating our, our support in doing so?
Correct. I just took a chapter of a Jerry's book about sometimes you should consider on the agenda instead of assuming you'll do it. So it's. So it's asking you to give permission, sorry, to, to act as the fiscal agent for the snow removal equipment purchase.
So other than, no, let me rephrase that. Being the fiscal agent on it, then we are gonna have more bonds against us, so if there's something that was demanding of us, there's a chance that we may not be able to get it then later in that year? Or would it take quite the stretch for us to get to that point?
So I expect that the snow removal equipment will be reimbursed, you know, when I say three months, it's always six months. I don't think that's gonna inhibit our ability. There are gonna be a couple other capital costs for, um, the refuse truck that's gonna be delivered and now this, um, loader. It's going to impact us because as the author showed during the workshop, it's been paid off some of our debt. And Virginia is also backing this snow removal equipment.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Any questions for anybody? I'm looking at the airport.
I know. I'm looking because it's gonna snow and we need it.
That, that, that's the basic thing we, the equipment is old, older than Jerry's.
And not only that, is, we're, we're trying to bring the airport into the future with other people coming there, with other airplanes coming in, with other businesses coming in, and we need the runways to be cleaned. Now, we finally got the staff for it that we are hoping. We've got people in it snows that are ready to go. We've got people cut the grass. We have another thing working on Wednesday. We're gonna, things are going in the right direction, so this'll be nothing but health. You know, we, we, we got a truck, you know, a seventy thousand dollar truck, plow, everything. By the time the smoke clears, it costs us maybe twelve thousand dollars with the grants, and we sold the other truck. And that was, it only had forty thousand miles on it, but it came over on a Mayflower. You know, you, you only travel so much out there, and, and things get beat up, and we need it to, to keep the airport running correctly. And, you know, the, we get grants that come in. It doesn't cost the two cities hardly anything for it. It just, you have to put the money up before it comes in. And I believe that we need it. Uh, Jim believes that we need it, and without it, I don't know what we're doing out there. So, you know, we have to keep it running, so that's why we're pushing for it.
Any questions? Any further discussion needed? Jackie, thank you for that explanation. Joe? Jim, thanks for your support and pushing all this through out there, making sure we get where we're needing to go. We hear it in your board and liaison updates, every single meeting, something going on out there. So it's nice to hear some positivity in the right direction. So if there's no further questioning or discussion for the consideration, that word can go away. For the consideration of the city of Evolth being the fiscal agent for the funding of the airports' no-removal equipment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry. Next up, number eleven, which was added, is a proclamation for the Rock Ridge tennis team for November seventh. Motion to move.
So move.
Per pitch.
Support.
Lilis. Um, the city of Evolth, the city of Gilbert, and the city of Virginia all worked together on November seventh to congratulate the Rock Ridge tennis team, uh, girls team, their coaches, the student athletes, the managers, uh, the whole works. We went down and did Rock Ridge community proud, not just by winning a state team title, but by doing it in a very respectful and upstanding way that we only expect from the Iron Range, I guess. But, um, in doing so, uh, those three communities worked together. We had a, a tour of cities, so to speak. We drove, um, numerous, uh, fire trucks, police vehicles, et cetera, through the communities. Um, I joined the bandwagon through Evolth. We stopped at, uh, the Laurentian Elementary. We swung through Main Street where there's a slew of people coming out and cheering and waving and the whole nine yards. And then they exited off to Gilbert, Virginia, for those elementary schools as well. Uh, it sounds like it was a, a good event, and everybody had a great time. But, uh, this proclamation would be, um, making, uh, November seventh of twenty twenty five, uh, Rock Ridge Girls, uh, proclaiming it their day. So congratulations to them, congratulations to everybody in the community who supported them and has friends and family and part of the whole works. We're all proud of everybody and everything they did with Wolverine Pride. With that being said, there's no further discussion? Any comments that would like to be made? All in favor of proclaiming November seventh as Rock Ridge Girls Tennis Day, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, congratulations to those ladies, their coaches, and their families. Next up, uh, addition is number twelve, uh, for the Rams dinner. Motion to move on discussion. Lilis.
Support.
Koyvenen. Uh, Rams every year have a annual dinner. And unfortunately, and I apologize, I'm unable to be there for this event. So I was hoping if I maybe look to my left and hope to the person to my right might wanna attend a, a dinner that evening for the Rams, that, uh, everybody over here will go, yes, and he'll.
So move.
November ninth, correct?
December.
Uh, December ninth, yes. No, it wasn't, it wasn't a week ago. It is, it's upcoming month.
It would be my pleasure to attend such a wonderfully catered event. Bring pictures.
John.
She's coming to dinner.
I will, uh, I'll let them know, and I'll get you all the information that comes with that. There was an invite as well from another group, and the, and the chances that we were not invited, but we, we certainly will. And Paul Peltier's got a great group going there, so it should be a great evening. Food will be wonderful, I'm sure.
Good for the people.
The people and the agenda will be amazing, so. All right, uh, all in favor of moving forward with Mr. Rousey attending that dinner, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, enjoy your dinner, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking my spot when I'm unable to be there.
As long as I don't have to take any flak that was meant for you, I'm okay.
That part I cannot. The things I create between then and now.
Could be troubles for a while.
Perfect. Next up is number thirteen. The purchase of a, uh, backup Zamboni. Motion to discuss.
So move.
Support.
Rousey, Koyvenen. So I made the comment earlier that when you have a conversation with Jerry, it's amazing how you go home over the weekend and wonder what's going on at high school and the locker rooms. But at the end of the day, Jerry and I were just discussing, you know, what we need to do in order to make things at the Hippodrome feel, uh, like we can, uh, have everything the way that we want, feel comfortable and confident that things are going smoothly. And one thing that we had mentioned was, okay, we just bought all these batteries for the Zamboni. You know, the Zamboni is not new. What happens with the ice if something happens? And it could be all the way to the point where we have to cancel a Wilderness game or a possible Wilderness weekend because we just can't maintain. Uh, we have the event coming on the twentieth, and it would be just a terrible night to find out that there's something wrong with, something else wrong with the Zamboni that can't be fixed in the moment. And the conversation just kinda kept moving forward that if we wanna create a contract with the Wilderness that might be long-term, it might be in our best interest, I won't steal your word, might be in our best interest, it doesn't behoove us, to possibly have a backup Zamboni. So with that, um, I took my weekend and dedicated it to shopping for Zambonis to see what you can do to purchase a, a used Zamboni or a new one. Um, I'm not Jerry, so I think I'm looking for a new Zamboni. I, I looked for, you know, a slightly used Tetris, Jerry. But what I found was, um, a few, believe it or not, there are not Zambonis for sale on every corner. But there are some in Minnesota, a couple in Wisconsin, et cetera. And there are some that are a little bit closer to home. There's, uh, some just dot far down the bend in the Greenway area. There's some just outside of Wisconsin. And what I would like to do is, based off the price that I see is, I would like us to move forward in okaying ten thousand dollars to Jerry and his needed mechanic to go look at these random ones that may be close by. And if they can work a deal and the mechanic feels as though it's the right piece to have as a backup piece, not maybe just for us, but to help Gilbert if they're ever in need of something or what have you, that we would have it, um, in our building of the Hippodrome. With that being said, the ones I was looking at are not nearly as big or can do exactly what the current ones that we have, because we do have a fairly large one. But in the time of a pinch, if we have a problem, this would work, these ones that I see would work just fine. It might take an extra couple minutes to cover all of the ice, but it would still do exactly what we're looking for it to do. So I'm just trying to help in the moment, and then also in the future, as we work on contracts, possibly with the Wilderness, and try to speak even with Rock Ridge School, or getting that hockey team, those hockey teams back over here a little bit more than maybe one night all winter, and show that we're doing everything we can to make sure we've got the equipment to keep this beautiful building up to par.
You know, and we can, let's say we pick one up, sell advertisement on it, sell advertisement on the other one. If we play cards, right, we could pretty near just about pay for it. Plus, we do have to enter and show the Wilderness that we are backing them. I mean, right now, they're playing, a hundred people there, two hundred people there. I mean, uh, the city of Evolth has to show some support to get into along. They're gonna wanna run five-year, maybe a five-year contract with us. Maybe somehow we're gonna be able to turn around and put the new air purifier in there. I, I just think this would be a great, a, a great time to, and for ten thousand dollars, I think that's a pretty good deal. If you and the mechanic can make it work, you know, and it's good enough to last us a few years. Because I think it would show good faith that the city of Evolth wants to keep them here, and I just think it would be good.
The ones that I was looking at, just so everybody knows, I was not looking at battery ones. Uh, Jerry likes lots of money for batteries, where these are propane. So it would, um, not come with quite the cost of, of fixing with, when we're out of propane, maybe just fill the propane instead of needing ten thousand batteries. But those are the ones I was looking at. There were other types out there, but the propane is the only ones that I was really looking into, so. Jim, the wheels are turning.
I just wanted to make sure it's, uh, a usable machine that, uh, will work, work for us, uh, economically and, you know, so.
That's, I don't wanna say let's go buy this one.
Right.
This is, I'm seeing a, a few of them out there that are range in a price range. Ten thousand dollars will pretty much cover any one of those. So it allows Jerry and his mechanics to go out and find the right one, not just one that we think looks good for today.
And you have to look at it. The batteries for the one we just bought were fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollars. So that's just for the batteries, so if the bad, you know, we need a backup, especially if we're gonna have all the hockey on there if we want, and maybe get a few more, uh, Rock Ridge games done or next year. We'll see what the heck happens, and I, I just, oh, you knew it's dry. I'm all for backups. And, uh, ten thousand is such a small amount compared to Jerry's usual request. That's because somebody else is looking for it. And, and let the guys that know, uh, more about what a good Zamboni is it not, you know? It's not like somebody will go buy a Zamboni because it's got pretty colors. You know what I mean?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. No, I think that.
So Jerry can handle her.
And I, like I said, I picked the number of ten thousand just based off of what I found on my numerous shopping.
Do you realize we're sending him to Wisconsin for a loader, and then we're sending him someplace else for a Zamboni? He's gonna have miles.
He'll get it all done in the nick of time.
If I could just say, um, our Zamboni is a nineteen ninety, so we've had it for many years, we've got it over nineteen ninety. And there's not a whole lot of mechanical things, but Ed Aru, our mechanic, has done a passive job re-fixing that thing up.
He's good at it.
It's, uh, there's a lot of electrical parts in it, um, some moving parts, so. He's rebuilt it a couple times and kept it going for us, so. It, this year, after we put those batteries in, we had a few problems with it just stopping then. It wasn't because of the batteries. It was something else electrical. Just stopping in the middle of a, of a cleaning, so. We had some wild, or Wilderness Games coming up, and we were pretty nervous, uh, that that thing was gonna go down. And I think Gilbert's, theirs were broke, theirs is broke down too, so they were working on that. Uh, this is a good reason to have a backup, because we, we've had to get backups before in the past. And with this older Zamboni, you just never know if it's working good right now, or you never know what's gonna happen.
So it's better to be safe than sorry. I did a Doug Diven example, he several times during my career. He can break at a moment's notice.
There's a seat on there, correct? An additional seat?
Yeah, we thought we can add one.
So we can, so we can start sponsoring rides for those that wanna ride on there and help.
You can practice the mare wave on there.
That's not exactly where I was going with that one, but.
I had to throw it up there.
You know, if you wanna do your wave, you know, it's only twenty dollars per intermission. But Brian, you were silent. Anything on your mind?
I support it.
Easy enough. There's no further conversation regarding that. We would be approving then, uh, Jerry, up to ten thousand dollars for the purpose of a backup Zamboni that meets the needs that our mechanic and him think that we have. Uh, no, no, no specific timeline, let's put it that way, at this point. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Brings us to our last one, which was added, which is number fourteen. And Joe kinda touched base on this a little bit in what he was discussing, but be discussing what we can do regarding the wraps for now, possibly both Zambonis, now that we may own two in the near future. Motion to move on discussion.
So move.
Koyvenen? Rousey? So my thought process with this, and it kinda balances what Joe was just saying, is, um, we have our current one that has some, uh, advertising on it. I, we're gonna look into the last time that that advertising on there was paid for in its year. Um, I think it would.
Behoove us.
Trying to get through a deal with them.
Damn good word.
Yes. Uh, maybe look into, um, a person in the area that wraps, whether it's cars, Zambonis for this example, and see what the cost would be to get, uh, both of them possibly wrapped, one being half Evolth with Ruin Gold and the other half the Wilderness, so that we can maybe chat with the Wilderness and see if they're interested in kind of a look. And on the other one, maybe wrap it half in Evolth again, and maybe Rock Ridge Schools and whatnot have some interest in being a part of sponsoring the other half of that one. Utilizing those, those dollars and those sponsorships to help pay for the one that we're looking at purchasing here in the near future. Um, I, I, I really like the idea of, personally, of splitting it down the middle so both of them have Evolth in Ruin Gold on them with our local communities that like to support our Hippodrome hockey, and then the other half supporting the schools that will be playing within the Hippodrome. But that is just that. Any thoughts or what have you? Jerry, we think it's been a bit since we've collected anything on any of the current ones, so we kinda are at a scratch point?
Uh, it's been a few years, um, but I'm not sure how that will work with the contract with the Wilderness, because they do get the advertising right now.
Okay.
So I'm not sure how that worked with the Zamboni being wrapped.
Then maybe we should speak with them, because they're one of the reasons we are getting one.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And they're very good to work with, so I don't think we'd have a problem.
Something that's in, in writing, or Jackie, a contract that states any of this type of stuff? Does anybody know, or is it just kinda been verbal that you get all the advertising?
Well, it's kind of verbal, but kind of a retuning. But, but Jerry, I'll take a look at that.
Okay.
You know, just let them know that they're one of the reasons we purchased this and are trying to move forward, you know, to keep them here.
Yeah. With that being said, then we won't worry about a, a vote on that. We'll leave it at discussion. Um, and we'll find out the answers that you can find out regarding the advertising aspect. Obviously, I don't wanna step on their toes if we gave them complete openness to everything going on, but hopefully they have just the boards and Zambonis can become something that we work on. that we work on.
Yeah, I could, you know, I probably think they're going to work with us because they had no idea we were going to have a second type of order.
Yeah.
So...
Okay. With that being said, we're then at Boarding Liaison Updates.
Well, I got, I'll take care of this thing. The only one I have, we have a meeting on Wednesday, emergency meeting, not just some stuff that we have to go over and then we have a little meeting afterwards to meet with a certain person, gentleman that's been running some ideas, maybe renting and teaching a class out there, which is all good, you know? So we'll let you know how all that goes. Like I says, we are hopefully going to turn this around and try to make some profit out there. It's been a long, a little bit of a long BS wait, but it's starting to come. You know, it takes a lot of time from everybody out there and everybody's got thoughts and we're moving forward and hopefully to give you some good news that it's turning on. We're going to be whipping. So, so we're working on it.
Perfect.
No, I'm good. Joe, pretty much took everything at the airport. We had some really good interviews, like I said, at the last meeting and we're moving ahead and I think we got some good people to work out there part-time, of course. We have a new manager, so we're looking to make things happen out there.
And a courtesy car.
And a courtesy car.
It looks really good in that parking lot.
Yeah, it's a Buick, right?
That's a nice looking car.
It's a nice looking car. It's got a Evlith, Virgin, logo on it. It's airport logo on it.
It's golden in my joy. Can you remember his last name? Starts with an S and...
Shul, Shul, Shul.
Shaw?
Shaw, Shaw.
Shaw better.
And you know, when somebody says they're going to donate a car, you figure, oh boy, what are we getting? I'll be a son of a gun. Every one of us looked in the parking lot and said, wow.
Saw the car with the logo on it, I says, that can't be the courtesy.
It's really nice. And they've been using it out there, so that's a, it's a plus.
Yeah, that's all we have.
Council Lilis?
HRAEDA, we're once again off sync, but suppose I could mention on behalf of the Public Safety Committee that we received competing applications for the Operations Manager for the Ambulance Service and we will be addressing the process to bring a recommendation to the council as soon as possible and hopefully by, well, we definitely need to get it done before the end of the year, but hopefully by the first meeting in December, depends on how it goes, but that's where we're at with that.
Thank you.
I have absolutely nothing.
That's a first.
You said something?
That is something. It's something.
I really don't.
I'm in disbelief. It turned my head. That's it. It's over. You lost it. Few things, the trunker treat that we had on Halloween was kind of a fun success. We had a couple of fire-issued vehicles there. We had the ambulance team there. We had two police vehicles there. We had a total of 18 vehicles handing old candy. I had some nice Halloween Monster Mash music in the background, but even more importantly, we had 124 trick-or-treaters come to my truck. That doesn't mean they were more or less going to someone else, but 124. And you know, at first, everybody was kind of worried about what should we do? What's going on here? And after a certain song came on that speaker, the kids were dancing in the middle of the driveway and everybody was having a blast. So it was a really good event. The group looks forward to doing it again next year and hopefully seeing it completely grow. Lots of people were excited, feeling comfortable, knowing that all I'm doing is walking in a circle, the police are right here, everything feels safe. So it kind of hit exactly what we were looking for in that. So thank you to everybody who played a part in our first annual trunker treat. Myself and Joe attended a meeting for Energizing Evlith, a new 501(c)(3) group that started here in town, kind of similar to other groups that communities have, and their goal is to work with this council, this, this group to try to create the funds needed for things that may not necessarily always just be available, whether it's through donations or drives or whatever it might be. As a reminder, they're the ones that came up with the funds for our building that's being put up right now at the dog park behind the old IGA there. They are working now with Joe and myself with selling a bunch of benches to go throughout the community as we, as we progress here. And if you haven't seen any of those, there are three of them out there. The masons who paid for all three of them for everybody to see, there's one at their Mason Hall right here in Evlith, so if you're going to go buy some pasties one day, you can see it there. There is one here at City Hall, which is gold, it's on the main level, and there's one down at the Hippodrome, which is Ruining Gold, which is kind of in the fun color. But we've had a few different places reach out already. We've had a few different classes reach out, same EHS class, I won't say the years because they're spry. But you know, it's, it's a, it's a good thing and it's a way that different groups and whatnot can get their, get their word out. And they're excited to do that and we're excited to get them in the community next, next summer. Other than that, they're looking at hopefully working with us on the items we need inside the community center. That is the first real small drive that they want to do, knowing that basketballs will be needed, volleyballs, standards, you name it. We kind of need all of it because there's nothing inside that community center right now, bouncy houses, whatever it may be. So they're going to really put their hands together and heads together, I should say, and think of what they can do. They're going to be down at the Hippodrome on the 20th of December to promote what they're doing and try to get people excited about it and get people to understand what's going on. So if you have any questions about benches, myself and Joe can help out. If you have any questions about Energizing Evlith, energizingevlith@gmail.com or you can email myself or Joe. We're here working with them the best that we can. So, and then last, I just had a question for Alan. You've been away the whole night. Are you done making a house rumble? Because I was confused for two days until I put tune two together that it was ripping up the earth, as everybody's laughing that I say earth, but ripping up the earth to put it in the parking lot.
They're pretty much wrapped up for, right now, we're going to do a quick punchless walkthrough. If there's anything we want to address before it gets too much colder out, now is a good time to try to get them to do some of that stuff. I know they're tied up for a couple of days, but it's about as far as they're going to take it. It's kind of what it sounded like.
Okay, so we'll be able to open that up to the public?
Yep.
As soon as we are done walking through it is your timeline? So next week or so?
Yeah, next week or so.
So is it just barricaded? I forgot I drove by today to know for sure. Is it just barricaded at this point?
I didn't go by today.
So it is open? That's why you noticed?
The roller is up on the boulevard, but it looked to me like you could drive on it very easily. It looks very nice.
The intent was as we were able to use it and Masabi Batumnis was aware that it was going to be usable for the winter if needed. So if the city uses it, they're going to come back in. They left the gravel a couple inches low, so it'll have to be shimmed up next spring before they finalize everything.
Jerry, your team is ready to blow that appropriately as needed?
As needed, yep.
That's when it snows.
Once it freezes for sure. You know, it's a little hard sometimes to blow fresh gravel.
Right.
But yeah, as soon as it gets cold enough, yeah.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank Masabi, the bit for getting out there like they did, and thank you Alan for getting on it as quickly as you did so we can have a parking lot for this winter, allows us to utilize the community center as soon as we possibly can. Jerry, you spent some money today. You've been butt on the jokes yet once again. Anything else on your mind?
I'm going to clip the line.
You're not a hate counsel.
He got his Tetris. He's a happy kid. Chief, chief, anything on your mind?
I got nothing, sir. Thank you, though.
Absolutely. Alan?
The only other thing was the utility worker, Yulens was doing, along 53 is pretty much buttoned up too. We're just checking if there's any outstanding items as well as MINDOT. It's kind of working through some punchless stuffs to wrap up that project as well.
You know, Alan, I got a question before you go. Right now, they've got it opened up, you come off the highway. Okay, I was witness to almost an accident there because they come off the highway and the people going up in front of Five Seasons, there's no signs for anybody to stop, so they almost T-bone each other. What are they supposed to do? Who's got the right of it?
Yeah, there's probably signage that's still coming. That'd be a MINDOT question. I can relay that to Alex.
Well, I think you should because I looked at it and I told my wife, I said, I couldn't answer that question.
No, no.
They come flying off the highway and somebody's going this way.
Let's not wait for MINDOT. Let's go get a sign up there and stop some money.
We should do something because we're going to have an accident there and I'm going to wonder who the hell, what's going on.
That's at the YF, the Five Seasons.
Yeah, you're coming off the highway and it kind of goes into Five Seasons, there's no stop sign, there's no yield, and when you're coming up from Five Seasons, you're going down from the ice rink, curling club, there's no sign that says stop or...
So if, and I'm not saying it's not true, so don't take this out of context, but if all of that is true, chief, can your team go up there and at least put two stop signs where they used to be for 50 years, 60 years, telling people to stop if you're not coming up that way?
We'll go take a look at it.
Save a life before you worry for MINDOT.
We're trying to figure out who's in the fault on this one because they're coming off the highway and there's no stop sign nearby Five Seasons, so...
I know what you're talking.
Yeah, not that I don't want to wait for them, but if you or your team could take a look ASAP, I would greatly appreciate that, even if it's temporary for two days, it's better than nothing. I'll then take a quick second and introduce our interim, which will then become our long-term city administrator, Mr. Pat Omen. He is here on day three, day three of many.
And he hasn't left yet?
No. He's in the...
He didn't discourage him.
This council is not going to discourage him. It's the greatest city in the world. Come on. With that being said, we welcome you here, Mr. Omen, and we're excited to work with you and take as much as you can from Jackie in the four weeks she's here and we'll continue to create a relationship that makes this city even better. We appreciate you. If there's anything that you need, call Brian.
Everyone's been very welcoming staff as well, so it's been a great three days, so thank you.
Absolutely. Did you get to do the tour with Jerry yet?
Actually, I took a tour with Jackie, but I am going to take a tour with Jerry and I think I'm going to take a tour with Chief.
Hold on to your wallet when you're with Jerry.
I say there, three very different tours, very different tours.
Thanks for the morning.
Uh huh. You might need boots for his. He'll put you to work again. This is the water sewer and I'm just going to shut the door now, so... But no, thank you very much for being here and we look forward to everything we do in the future. Jackie, anything else on your mind this evening?
Thank you.
Wonderful. Joel, we only have, what, guaranteed two more times after this?
That's right.
Do you have anything you'd like to say this evening?
I feel like I'm going to be on or something.
Fair enough. And the city of Evlith is actively and almost done, complete working on bringing in our community and economic development person. So we're really excited about that. Hopefully, in the very, 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 very near future, we'll see progress underway with that project as well. So lots of great things happening in the community. I'm sorry that you may not always see every one of them, but they're happening every day. And if my patience can keep up, I know everybody else is going to.